Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to call the order of this special meeting of the Florida Johnson County Commissioners on this Wednesday, April 29th, 2020 at 11:00 a.m. At least that far got in there, right? It'll be a discussion about the building access and opening dates and things like that. We'll have some sequels with that. With that said, we have kind of a summary to go by, thank you very much, Sheena, for that. If we could get an update from the Health Department, we'd be great. And if you would, when you do come up, please announce who you are and your position.
Hi, I'm Craig Mormon, County Health Officer.
Betsy Swearingen, Director of Health Department.
Morning.
We keep social distance, but we're together every day.
We spend every day.
Every day.
It's almost like husband and wife.
Yeah.
We're a big family over here.
Everybody's been pretty busy. You want to give them an update?
What do we, what do you look for?
Just an update on where we're at, how we're doing, how things are going?
We are continuing to still see new cases. I'm looking for them, okay, sorry. We're still continuing to see new cases every day. We were seeing kind of a concentration in our long-term care facilities, but in the last two days, I would say it's pretty widespread, community-based instead of in the long-term cares. Our long-term cares are struggling. There's been a lot of fatalities. We've lost 10 in the last two days, not per se just in long-term care, but that's, that's a lot for two days.
I think, community-wide, it's still on the rise, but I, I think there's, it's a moving target. I think it's confusing because they're testing more and more, and so we're going to find more and more diseases. Still, I think the senior citizens are at highest risk of, over 70% of the fatalities are people over 70. So, and right now, the state has, if you had presumptive cases in along with it, there's about 1,000 deaths and probably over 16,000 positives. Now, you ask why presumptives? The test isn't perfect, you know? There's a certain amount, maybe up to 20% false negatives, so, and there are some people that they think had it, but didn't ever test, but it's, there's too many variables there. So that's why they have that category too.
Okay, two things I should mention. We have decided, per Dr. Box's recommendation, to not release our statistics from our long-term care facilities. I know Boone County just outright dumped everything, and I, and I just feel like at this point, or we just feel like at this point, per her recommendation, it isn't necessarily the, the statistics itself that they don't tell you the whole picture, and we just think that that would not behoove these people. And the Fairbanks School of Public Health is at IV tech right now. Today will be the last day. They started Saturday morning. Antibody testing that is not open to the public. It is not open to anyone other than a person that receives something in the mail from them or a phone call from them that's very specific. It's also not transferable, so I know someone's 15-year-old received, you know, an, an application to test, but you can't pass that on to a parent or another person. It's solely for the person that is picked, and that's been a big question because everybody wants to be antibody tested, but...
Well, it's, it's supposed to be a randomized study, so it's totally randomized, so you can't, it would bias the results if they just had people walk in and say they wanted to be tested. So it's just, it's a study they're doing, a research study right now to collect data. And eventually, the antibody tests will be available for the general public soon, within the next week, I think, actually, in Johnson County. Now, interpreting those tests is another matter, and so, again, it's not perfect, and it takes some interpretation, so it's not, it's not perfect. We'll have to work with the results and...
I think we're never going to have anything perfect.
No, no, no. We're learning in something every day, so, I mean, we just have to go with what we know and be careful and, and protect our seniors, which, I mean, I'm one of them.
I got one. I mean, if we move towards an opening, I guess the public restrooms in this, in all our facilities would be subject to, I mean, kind of your leadership on that, on what you believe and what you think.
Well, we, I looked at the questions that you put in your email, Sheena, and I think they're very helpful ahead of time, and we, we talked about that. I think you have to have some public restrooms.
Yeah, and that's kind of where I'm leading, I want, you know...
Well, the only thing that, the only thing that does concern me is if we are the only ones that open up, let's just say here in this building per se, we're going to be the only public restroom in all of downtown Franklin, so I just, that would be my only concern there with doing that. And I will say, we allowed someone during the fair to use our restrooms, and he came in and did drugs in our bathroom, and we could not, we couldn't remove him even with the sheriff's evidence because we allowed him to use our facility, so just food for thought.
Well, and we will have, in working with Sheriff Burgess, who's really always been good to work with, but we will have security here once this is opened up in the lobby area right here, so people will be approached as they come in the door to make sure they're here for the barber business and things like that.
You might also consider cleaning the restroom maybe, maybe twice a day instead of once a day, yeah?
And, and what I've, I've said is, is we have lockdown restrooms for employees. Employees need to use lockdown restrooms instead of public restrooms for that period of time, so...
Speaking of employees too, the question of whether or not masks should be worn for the employees and the visitors. I think the visitors, it's optional. Employees, I think they should be offered the opportunity and the access to masks if they feel more comfortable. I don't think it should be required, but I think that should be something that...
I think it should be a personal decision because I figure out...
And maybe the ability to wipe down surfaces once in a while if they feel like they need to. And what we talked about before, the social distancing, maybe putting the X's on the carpet, like I can anticipate the property tax people coming in and having spacing.
Yeah, and what we're dealing with, including on that, we met with the treasurer and auditor yesterday, talked some of those things through, and we'll come up with some more ideas today, I'm sure.
I think...
I think we're doing everything we can.
Well, trying to limit the numbers in the building, unless you see it's starting to get really crowded, I don't know how you're going to do that, but...
I think you just have to do that from the security at the lobby area, saying, you know, we've got 10 people in there, 15 people in there, that's about what we're going to be, and I, I think that's a determination that, again, we need to discuss with the, the elected officials that will be handling those people and say, what do you think? What's your safe?
With regard to opening our immunization clinics again, because in addition to this, if the kids do go back in the fall, we have a whole HEPA new requirement, so we're going to be very busy. We are going to set aside parking spots in the front of the building. We'll ask them to call us, we'll go out, check them to make sure that they're healthy, and only a certain amount of people will be let in the building at a time. That's something that you could consider too. We currently walk our birth and death certificates to the curb now, so I don't know.
I got a really nice layout from the, well, we got a letter from, Michael Delp at the animal shelters, kind of doing the same thing, where people, there'll be a sign on doors that call this number, you know, we'll come out, and that keeps them from just walking into the facility, so...
One other question that you raised in your email, Sheena, was whether or not to screen everybody with temperatures. I think that's, it's worth a thought, but I, knowing that a lot of these people don't have fevers that are spreading the virus, I think it's not a very useful piece of it.
Well, then, if someone does have a higher temperature and it's not the disease, then you turn them away, then what do you do at that point in time?
I think you can suggest if they seem ill to go away and come back when they're better, or at least try to conduct...
Ask them if they have some certain symptoms, ask them if you do that, could we not?
Sure.
Sheena and I discussed a little bit too, if we make it look kind of scary, like stop, you know, something, I mean, like, like you're coming through a checkpoint or something, I think that that would behoove us too, if they see that and they, and it directly spells out if you have this, 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 or this, do not come in this building, you know, something...
Signage, maybe, as they come in the door, and then also, you know, maybe a question or two from the security person.
Yeah.
And I need to get this out early before I forget, and I talked to this with a couple of the elected officials. We're going to have people come in this building, they're already frustrated, they're already mad.
Yep.
And, and we need to understand that, and we need to be in our processes, we need to consider that, because, you know, one little thing could put some of these people over the edge, because they're already getting there.
Yep.
And I talk to those type of people every single day, I talk to those people, they're just really frustrated and they're mad. And I'll tell you the other thing, and I've heard this from probably about three out of 10 people that I've talked to, is they're mad because the government, that all our employees are being paid, and we've got 26 million people unemployed, and they're not happy about that. So we've got that coming in right off the bat, and we, we've got to understand, we've got to be understanding of it, doesn't mean it's fair, because we're here working, but we have to be understanding of that, and, and I think we need to put that out to everybody. And I think we need to have some kind of public announcement, letting people know, we're not, not inviting you to come in the building, you know, we, we want you to come if that's absolutely necessary for you, but otherwise, we ask that you do it a different way, get that on the news stations and get that out there, and kind of get prepared for this. And those are just things that I've been losing sleep and not thinking about the last week, so...
Yeah, I think we've tried to, at the Health Department, try to be flexible and try to work with people. Some people have the capability of doing things online, other people don't have a clue or don't have the ability, and you just try to work with them and figure out what they need and flex a little bit.
And we're going to make mistakes, and, and I say in that, the public are going to make mistakes too, and they're, they're going to have, they're going to have some issues that we need to think about, but we don't want to insult those people or make it worse than what it is. So I think we just have to look at this, like, step back, chill out a little bit, relax, and let's just do this from a common sense approach, and I think, I think the people will, I think they'll work with us, so...
And if any of the employees have questions or concerns or just need to be talked down off the ledge, we do that all day, every day, so we'll be more than happy to...
I may call you later.
We could, we could even come over and, and talk to them and look at their setup and help them figure out flow and things if they feel better about that, it's health people, you know?
I would, that would be greatly appreciated, and I would ask even, and I know this is probably going over my, my boundaries a little bit, but I would ask maybe we have someone here the day we opened that, that day for a little while, just kind of helping us and...
Sure. Well, it was interesting, on the first day, the Franklin Schools gave out their, or they did a mock run of their lunch distribution for, you know, their kids that don't get food every day. The teachers were handing out the food, and they were leaning in the cars, giving the kids hugs because they missed them, and we're like, okay, wait, wait, we need to, and it was great, it was something, it was just a trial run, so they were able to fix it, so stuff like that, we're going to, we're going to have to, we're going to have to get through the, those hurdles.
And we would appreciate any help we can get there, especially in the first few days of this, till we get kind of used to the way it's going to work, and I'm sure all of us would be more than happy to welcome in the building. I don't know if there's any guns given here.
One of these days, not today.
I've never been a hugger, but...
I am.
Yes, you are.
I got a question for Dr. Mormon.
Sure.
When you mentioned presumptive deaths, I did see that the state nationally was recording those separate from COVID deaths.
They still are.
Are we doing that? I didn't see that in the paper.
It's only in the state tally, and I think, do we have our own, Betsy, do we have our own presumptive?
Not, not presumptive.
I think it's, it depends on who's reporting it. It's a statewide thing. We, I don't think we've had many, many presumptive ones here in the county, but it's around the state, and it just is, there's about 90, there's a little over 900 reported COVID deaths that are documented, and then there's 900, or 91 or something presumptive ones right now, so it puts us right at 1,000. I understand the presumptive thing, it, there are people that, for all the world, appear to have COVID, and they're, I can go into all kinds of details, there's a certain pattern on x-ray or CT scan of their chest that's pretty classic, all these things, and so if they fit the profile, but they just don't come up positive, they go ahead and say it's probably that. I mean, it, the test isn't perfect, just like everything else we're working with, there's some room for interpretation and medical judgment on that, and I think that's why they added that category, because there are a fair number of those people coming up that they didn't have any way to explain it otherwise. But I, I understand, and it's, it's a, it's, there's, it's a foggy picture, it's not clear totally. Same way with all these other tests, everybody's hoping for some sort of magic wand or something, and the, the real magic wand is the vaccine, and even that is probably not perfect, and who knows when that'll come out? Maybe this fall, maybe, if we're lucky. But that'll be really nice, if it works and if it's safe, and I assume both of those things will be counted.
Yeah, yeah.
Hopefully, we have to depend on the FDA to...
Be prudent.
...tell us it's going to make us throw an extra arm or anything, you know, I mean, and it'll work, and I want it to prevent the disease, so that would be really great.
That'll happen, it'll happen to me, you know?
Oh.
I'll drop that black cloud that bubbles around.
Then if we do get the vaccine, a matter of priority, who gets it first, because it'll be limited supply, there'll be millions of people that want it, so the Health Department will be back in, it'll be like H1N1, remember back in '09 when we had these giant clinics, and then we have to worry about social distancing more so than the H1N1 thing, so it'll, yeah, we'll, we'll do it, we've been talking about it, so...
The only reason I keep working on the death total of presumptive, and I've even questioned the COVID death totals, is not being fully accurate in their reporting of that, and then the reason I have done that, and I keep making this point, is that if there was never a death associated with this virus, there would be no fear of it, there would be no pandemic, there'd be no closing down the government, and no social distancing and all of that, so the death total has a direct effect upon how people view a virus.
Well...
And, and the more that that death total was overstated in comparison to other viruses or epidemics, it really distorts the people's idea of how lethal it is or how...
We're not making up data, you know, it's, it's real data and it's positive, and I sign off on every death certificate in the county. Every week, I sign off on the new ones and look at the cause of death and look at everything and make sure everything's filled out, because I'm the, it's my responsibility. And a lot of the folks that are dying from COVID are not healthy, but they wouldn't have passed away if they hadn't gotten COVID. So that's what tipped the scales in most of these people. Now, some, some people don't have any pre-existing conditions, and that's what's scary, and it's about, sure, the flu's deadly, but it's probably 10 times as deadly as the flu and much more contagious it seems than the flu, so that's what makes it dangerous. And the fact that we don't really know a lot about it, and it's an RNA virus, I could get real technical again, but RNA viruses are now to mutate and, and do weird stuff, and it affects your body in so many different bad ways, worse than the flu, so it's hard to even compare. We, we've never had anything like this, at least in all our lifetime.
Thank you.
So, yeah, all right, any other questions or anything?
No.
Okay.
You guys are going to stick, are you guys going to stick around in case something else pops up later? Thank you.
Two, two things that I just referenced to the comments by Dr. Mormon and Betsy in relation to masks, county employees wearing masks, I think they could do that now, I haven't seen them doing it, maybe some have, I just haven't been aware of anybody doing that, so I'm not sure that that's a precaution that they deem necessary or needed, or they'd already be availing themselves, but...
The buildings are close to the public right now, though. The buildings are close to the public right now, so...
But they're still...
If we open them, they may finally go on to wear masks.
But we are public, yeah, we are public, so we're associating with each other on a continual basis. Really, you've got more exposure that way, I think, than somewhat than you have, yeah, Dr. Morse, but his on us, the general public. And the other thing is that I continue, you've got to give the general public some credit for being intelligent beings. And I say that in regard to, we've already discussed how useful it has been for people to convey their business or do their business with the county, be it electronics, emails, phone, whatever, that they've been able to do, that's a, that's a real convenience for them, and I think, and they're going to utilize that going forward, when it's, when it's available to them and the most expedious, expedient way to do business. The other thing is, if they're sick and they don't feel good, or they're afraid of contracting, they're not going to come down anyway, they're going to stay at home. Now, I know somebody's going to bring in, well, you got that crackpot, well, hell, you got that crackpot, no matter where you go, so you have to, you know, you can't live your whole life for fear of one crackpot. So you've got to give the general public credit, being intelligent beings, that they're going to be prudent in how they approach anybody, whether it be a county employee or a proper cashier, they're already doing that. And so some of these, some of these precautions that, that I've heard come forth from some of the department heads, I, I don't know that they're necessary. I think, again, that the general public's going to be wise in how they approach this. So I just wanted to touch on those two things early, because if, if that's a topic of your, your discussion, we've already, at least I've already expressed my opinion on it.
Update from maintenance, Jason Miller. Can you give us an update on how we're doing, where we're at with it, please, sir? And also, as Jason comes up, I do want to thank him and the maintenance department for the job they've been doing, they're, they're working their rations off and helping us with suggestions and looking at all the stuff that we've got to do coming forward, sneeze guards and the X's on the floor, and I just want to thank you, Jason, and your crew for what you guys have done.
Jason Miller, Maintenance Department. My, I've met with a couple of elected officials about the X's on the floor, and looked at the sneeze guard that we do have, and the other ones have been shipped. The scheduled date right now is the 30th, which is tomorrow. That date changed on the single one, not the 20th, so I don't, I don't really expect them tomorrow, but that's where we're at. Talked to my staff about if we do open, how we clean the bathrooms, this, this public bathrooms, they need to go in more often during the day, and clean them very carefully.
Yeah.
Exactly. Also talked to the auditor and the treasurer about giving them rags and disinfectant so their staff can wipe down their, their areas, and I'll do that for all the other departments, the courts and everything else when they do open.
And we also, even in, in the employee restroom, where we're only going to have employees, we still need to be very sanitary when we're in those, using those as far as us, the people using them, making sure that we, you know, wipe down things and we use soap and, you know?
As a thought, I could leave disinfectant in there on the counter.
I, I think that might be a good idea.
Commissioner West is right, we are public.
Right.
Yeah, I'm, I did the program, I've been around with the people, so...
I know, anytime I go in the, in the restroom, I, I take a paper towel and soap and wipe down the counter and faucet and everything while I'm in there, just as something to try to help, so, same way in the break room, but, yeah, I think we need to probably ask them in the break room, also because, you know, now that we can't go out to lunch, everybody's using the microwave in the break room.
Sure.
You have to fight for, you almost have that appointment, use the microwave right now down here, so, I think we probably ought to do something there too.
We can make that happen.
And I think, anyway, you guys have done a great job. Any questions for Jason?
No, I'm just waiting on you.
Yeah, that's, that's anybody's guess at this point.
Jason, do we have a, does the animal shelter have a plastic sneeze guard, I guess, like a proper term, or a counter?
You are on the list, Michael.
Yes, thanks, Jason, I appreciate it.
Yeah, I, we have one for your, your department over there.
Awesome.
Usually you guys are senior way there at the counter anyway, most of the time. Yeah, we're, but the court's not opening up till the 18th, helps us a little bit, because that actually gives us maybe, what, three or four extra that we can work in somewhere or so.
Yeah, absolutely.
For those that we've missed.
I was going to give one to each court, so that gives us a few extra, and we can order...
We can just order those.
We can give a more accurate count.
Right.
And order some more.
So I think, you know, we'll have time to get them theirs too, so that, it should work out well. Update from Emergency Management, Stephanie?
Stephanie C. Sting, Emergency Management Director. I'm continuing getting supplies in with our MOUs. I get calls, I'm having them either delivered or they come to my office and pick them up. Talked to Jason yesterday on those sneeze guards you guys were talking about, I'm going to pay for those out of our disaster spending account.
Thank you, appreciate it.
So he gave me the invoices for the ones, the one he got in and the ones he's getting in, and he sent me his credit card statement, so we're going to take that out of that spending account.
And I know that, I think the sheriff's helped with hand sanitizer, so thank you very much.
Yeah, and I just gave, I know he gave some masks, and I just gave Jason yesterday 500 of them, so we should have plenty, we have plenty of hand sanitizer. I have some in my office, and I just brought Amy some more wipes and gloves, so we should be, we open up, we should have enough for the employees if they wish.
So we do have masks if people, employees would like to have one, we can supply that at just one time.
Yes, Jason has those. He came and picked them up, so I was more than happy, he came in earlier to talk about those sneeze guards, and I told him what I had, so he come back and goes, you should never have told me what you have, but that's what it's there for, so...
That's what I love, and I love our people.
So, if that's what I'm doing, I'm just, when I get calls from Walmart, Sancho, Krogers, we go get it.
Yep. Stephanie, how much PPE do you have? I mean, do you see a...
Well, that's going to be my next thing that we're going to, you know, Betsy and I talked, we're going to have to buy some to stockpile, you know, as we know this is the problem.
Availability, can you still get it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. I think you'll get a good run once we open up and find out what your ongoing needs are.
I think we've got, Sheriff, Sheriff, if you want down the supply chain, you can get this pretty quickly.
I found it, yeah. I found it, and I've used it for him, so, yeah. And I still get, I get emails all the time from that company, you know, stating what they still have, and they've got everything, so...
It's amazing how the cost is, though, eh?
Some of it's gone down from our original, so...
From original order, right?
Yeah, so that's what we're going to, I'm going to start using, so, yeah. When he said he wants to order some more...
When the cost goes down, means there's more availability, supply and demand, so I think we're, we're starting to get a catch-up on that.
I don't think a whole lot of people know about this company, so...
Okay, we won't mention it.
Don't mention it, but, yeah, because every time I call him, he goes, oh, yeah, we're going to ship to you, so...
And it could be just that good.
Yeah, I mean, they're really good to work with.
Good.
We haven't had a problem with them yet, so that's where I'm going to start over some PPE, just so we have it on hand, and I've got a storage room, let me put it in, so...
Are we on the toilet paper? I'm going to ask Jason that question, or wipe that?
Wipe that.
Yeah. Inside joke is definitely bad.
Yeah, so, yes. But that's all, I mean, that's all our office is doing, just work on those companies and say, you know, let us know, like, I had to go Saturday, I got a call Saturday afternoon that Sancho had stuff for us, so I went up there, picked it up. I don't want to leave it too long, they may decide not to, they pull it off their trucks and...
If you ever need any help, or somebody run up there, you know, I'm out in that a lot, so...
And they're really good, I mean, she just texts me, I'm getting to know all these leggies that are assistant managers, and one of the ones that, look for manifest on trucks coming in, they'll pull it, let me know.
Appreciate it.
So...
I'm, I'm good.
Stephanie, do you want to say anything about how to document?
Oh, yes. Request for public assistance. Each department that did it need to make sure that they're keeping all their invoices, and if they have an account on the grant system, they can go in and fill out. I've already, I've already put in for some of our expenses, because there's a, you have to say if you're completed, you're still ongoing, well, I said I'm still ongoing, and only done like 15% completed, so they can go online and start requesting reimbursement. Yeah, because the state... that applied in the county that they kind of want to know what their projected expenses were going to be, just so they could let FEMA know, so they could know how much to send to states, so.
And I, I would encourage you to overinflate that.
I didn't.
Because I just got, I just got an invoice for close to $30,000 for PPE that we will owe and that's paying 17 cents a mask, not $3 a mask, so, um.
Yeah, that's through the healthcare publishing.
It's not an invoice, it's a tracking sheet and it will only, it will only be worse than what it is now.
That makes sense. So.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Thank you.
Bye, sir. Do we have any input from the courts, anything that you would like to tell us is going on in state or? The man with all the information right there.
No information. Peter Dugan, Superior Court, too.
Still left to wait.
I'm fine. Let us keep our hands on.
He was already left home.
Uh, we are with the courts, we're still following the guidelines or directives from the Supreme Court. Uh, we're only holding essential hearings, we're doing our jail hearings through Zoom or through the computers, so we don't have a lot of personal contact. We are, there's a regional meeting tomorrow between our county, I believe Shelby and Hancock. The Judge Clark's going to talk about how to reopen safely, uh, when the date comes. So, and probation, um, is working with us as well, they are obviously doing what they can to stay within the guidelines of the Supreme Court, keep people safe. Angela Morris, of course, is looking for the pandemic handbook, but hasn't been able to find it.
Did you find it yet?
Still looking.
Somebody will make one up here soon.
Somebody will make one up, so, you know, we're still trying to keep our, let's say, they're within the guidelines of the Supreme Court, so nothing else. Anything else I left on?
Any feedback from the state, do you think the 18th is our date or do you think it's subject to change? I, I know everybody's got that look on their face, it's a crystal ball you're looking into.
I think it all depends on the numbers. I mean, I think if the numbers, they see the numbers start to drop, they say, okay, let's try and safely open, spread things out a little bit, have less people in court at a time and let the committed work, but I just don't see a full-blown opening anytime soon.
You had been dealing with emergency cases, custody hearings and so forth.
It's really slow, people are really, we're not, our filings aren't terrible and the emergencies aren't too bad, I mean, I've dealt with one or two things, really not too many.
Oh.
I'm shocked, I have to be.
Yeah, that's what I'm kind of.
But, uh, mostly it's just been dealing with inmates, making sure jail number words and trying to keep people, you know, whose rights are being, and these are a lot of them, trying to make sure they're taken care of and surprisingly low for the family law, at least at my court.
Good.
And that's a positive. You got to look for some positive, right?
Yeah.
You got to look for some positive.
It'll change.
I'm hoping not, but yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Input from sheriff's office dispatch. You're going to handle both, I guess. And you can do it.
I've got, I've got a big pizza truck down there, so that's probably where all the dispatchers are at.
Yeah, I just want to say that.
We're getting sad, yeah. Um, that we're working with the courts, we're doing everything that we're supposed to be doing, we're going to stay status quo, Sheriff's Department, I'll bring people back with the detectives instead of working from their cars or out in the field, and my number one goal is to protect the jail, that, that's my biggest issue, that if it's in there, that we could be in trouble. I've talked to a lot of the sheriffs around the state of Indiana, we're trading information back and forth and, uh, you know, we're going to stay, as I said, status quo and go from there, keep protecting the people as much as we can.
So we've had no positive cases in the jail?
Yeah.
Thank you.
No, we've had scares and we've had to quarantine some folks and we've worked with the health department, they've been great on anything that we need or information and, uh, for any, any staff, that's a big thing, the staff are following, following the guidelines that we set out for, uh, wherever we come up with the, the meeting today, we'll probably tweak it to meet our standards or at the jail, but, uh, Dr. Mormon and Metz, it's been great to give us scripts and get my people checks, so it's been a lot of teamwork in the county, so I'm pretty happy with everybody and I couldn't, we're blessed in this county, we really, if you say on that.
Yeah.
I don't understand it, but you can say, talked to one sheriff in northern Indiana, he's got 40 front cases in his jail, so I pray that that doesn't come in that.
And thank you for your work on the NIM's, uh, incident management team. I know that's very helpful information to everybody that you're sending out, I know there's a lot of time spent on that, so.
Thank you. Thanks, Sheriff. And, and as I said, Sheriff is, worked with me at this point on getting some security in, really must have opened, I won't mention that, Sheriff.
That's what I was going to mention too, I, I talked with Michelle Graves today too, so whatever they need, whatever you need here, whatever numbers we come up, people that we allow, I will assign a deputy here at the door to monitor that personally, so whatever you need, we're going to give to you.
Greatly appreciate that, sir. Much appreciated. Again, that's the county working together, everybody doing their parts, really, really cool. Input from, uh, highway, other than, I don't want to go over the three, four pages you sent me, but.
Did you read it under, did you read it under?
Hi, Judge. No, I did not read it, no, my phone.
He told me not to.
I printed it out, yeah, I printed it out, actually. And, and.
Luke Mastin, highway director, I just wanted to make sure you had as much information as I can.
And we appreciate that, we should all be that thorough on every day of our job, so you know.
Yes, it takes time to be that.
It does.
So, uh, from the highway department's standpoint, fortunately, the bulk of our staff is staff that works in the field, uh, doesn't have necessarily a lot of risk in interaction with the public. Um, we have had a few, um, instances so far that thankfully have not turned out to be any larger than they actually were, but as, as a department head and, and someone who obviously is concerned about people that I work with, it's stressful to say the least. Um, my biggest concern would be just opening up the office, although I don't know my concerns would be any different than any else's. Uh, we do have a pretty small office, they are pretty close, um, so I, one of my bigger concerns has been if someone in the office does get sick, it will probably wipe out most of the.
If, if someone would walk into your office from the public, why would they be there?
Typically to drop off a permit, um, that's probably the bulk of our issues.
When you say drop off a permit?
So we have, uh, utility companies that drop off driveway permits for utility installations. We also handle driveway permits, uh, for any new driveways typically associated with new houses. We have provided drop boxes and, and drop facilities at the front door, which have been used, um, actually pretty, quite a bit, so that.
So that's as public to your billing would be probably less than anybody's and thing that we're talking about right now at this point in time?
I, absolutely. Um, we do, um, occasionally have residents who want to come in and discuss certain issues. Um, I will tell you, it's probably easier for everyone for them to just cuss us out on the phone than it is to come in the office and do, so.
I'm going to agree with that.
So.
I've been on the other end of a few of those, so I know what you're saying.
Um, I, I would say if there's a silver lining, and I touched on this when we talked about this about a month ago, it's really forced us to look at monitor, mon, mon, modernizing, excuse me, um, our availability to the public. Uh, as you know, earlier this year, we signed a contract to upgrade our work management system, which will actually include a pretty substantial, um, resident side asset to it, so they can, anyone really can report an issue without even having to, to try to contact us on the phone and it goes straight into our system. I really wish that was in place right now, but it'd probably be late summer before we have that up until, but we've been available by phone and by email and unless you've heard anything different, uh, we haven't really had any issues communicating publicly yet.
No more than normal.
Exactly. It hasn't gotten any worse, has it?
I did take time to read through that article that you referenced in your email from Science Magazine. I got a page and a half of rebuttals to most of it, but I'm not going to go into it, but the only thing I'd say about that article that discredits it is most of the statistics that they, uh, use, um, all come out of Wuhan, China. And who could believe that, right? So I haven't put a lot of credence in that article.
Well, and really that wasn't, I, I didn't necessarily provide that to you as, as if these sorts of support one way or the other for what we're talking about here, that's just more informational, but, and I'm fascinated by what appears to be all the different systems that this virus seems to be affecting people who have it, so unfortunately, we don't have enough data, trustworthy data at this point, uh, to try to dig it out.
Yeah, e- even in that, the experts or the doctors that were quoted in there, uh, had, had opposite opinions, you'd, you'd get one doctor said this and then you'd get another one that said.
Just lots of news for that, yeah.
So many of them, so, yeah, it's really up in the air still as far as the investigative part of the, the effects of it, I guess.
So, it's a lot like a lot of what we do, it seems like we deal with moving targets a lot.
Well, and this has been nothing but one giant moving target, I mean, that between trying to find materials to try to keep people as safe as we can and, and hopefully help them not get sick, that's, it's been pretty stressful, I, I'll be honest about that. At the point that we do open the highway office, um, we will have the ability to essentially keep visitors confined to our entryway. We do have an open entry window, service window, that needs some sort of protection. Um, I had mentioned that to Jason, so I, I'd like to see that in before we do decide.
Have you looked at the sneeze guard we've got set up?
I haven't yet, I didn't know.
Walk down toward the log, actually it's still set up.
It's like.
Yeah, if you can walk down there and look at that. And again, we're, we're going to have a few extra to start with because the, the court's being closed right now. Um, so give us some time, we need probably get a quick figure on that, as quick as we can, get some more.
One thing that, that you touched on, Brian, earlier is I think that nerves are going to be pretty high when it's open up and not just from people that walk in the front doors, but, um, it's a change too for the employees, um, on the, the concept of wearing masks around coworkers, I mean, that we definitely could, I would say that I spend more time with my coworkers than I do my family, so there's a level of trust there, um, that the people that you're working with, if they get sick, are going to take measures and try to keep you safe. And we don't have that with people who walk in front of you, so it's not just going to be those people, it's going to be the employees. Um, I think it is good to encourage everyone to be aware of that and as best they can, try to relax and stay calm, but I wouldn't be surprised if, if we have a few issues, um, and I honestly would just ask that we be patient with employees as we make this transition.
Yeah, we can do a lot of things, you know, as far as employees self-monitoring their temperature, you know, which is what I'm doing in my business, all my employees take their temperature before they leave the house and they report that temperature to their supervisor, uh, that way we're not doing it, it's their responsibility for them to do that to keep everybody safe, you know, they're, they're checking themselves for those symptoms every morning before they leave and there's a checklist that they're going by, you know, that they're checking off they don't have these symptoms, uh, and that's why it's not intrusive to the employee or us, us making them do something that, that I think we could come back and bite us later, which we can get into here too, uh, but I think if you do that self-reporting and, and allow them some personal responsibility will help too, so I think those are things we need to consider.
One of the, the things that's come up in some of our discussion is relaxing of some, some of the HIPAA regulations, but that primarily applies to the healthcare industry, not to, so we are still limited in what questions that we are allowed to ask, uh, those types of questions, that specific information, um, and unfortunately, how much information we can share with other coworkers when there are incidents, and that's been an issue for us in our three different scenarios. Obviously, as someone who has worked with my coworkers for a long time, I'd love to share as much information as I can so that they are as knowledgeable, as convenient when an incident happens, but my hands are tied as employers.
Yeah, and, and I understand the privacy issues there, and again, these are things like for my employees that are self-checks, you know, they're doing that to themselves and we're just depending on them to be responsible and prudent and say, you know, I probably shouldn't come into that. Uh, they know they're going to, we're going to work with them on pay and, and that anyway, so it's not like we're asking them to do something that condemns their ability to, to work or employ.
Absolutely.
And I think you get a little bit of work in both ways, you trust them, they trust you and you kind of work together, and I think that's how we establish that.
From an employer's standpoint, I mean, we do have the ability to ask an employee to go home if they are presenting symptoms, it's also able, which is allergies.
And I know mine are flared up.
Trying to determine who may have allergies versus actually having, being sick, I mean, it, it's a challenge, uh, but we do have that capability, which is.
But also knowing that, that those people like myself, you know, I take my temperature every morning, every night, you know, I do a self-check list, but I know what my allergies are and being a responsible person, if it gets outside of what I know as my allergy reactions, I'm going to be honest and say, I probably shouldn't be around people again. I just hope, and, and I feel like the responsibility of our employees that'll do that, I, I don't think we're going to, I don't think we're going to have a lot of people doing some things. I, I trust the employees, but what we need to understand, I've got to say this before we move on, is more than likely the people we're going to have come into this building are going to be older people, there are going to be people in that age range, that 60 years old or above, more above than, it's a 60-year range, because if it's anything, like my parents or my in-laws, they don't have smartphones, they don't have internet on their phones, my in-laws don't even have a computer or access to internet, period, so their options are limited, and you give them a chance to get out of the house and go somewhere they can go, they're going to be here. And I, I just want to put that out there, nothing against that, you know, I don't blame them, you know, they're frustrated, they want to get out, they want to do something, even if it means coming here, so we have to kind of be prepared mentally for that too, because that's the people we're going to be dealing with, the people that are older, frustrated, uh, that don't have some of the capabilities, uh, that other younger people have, so there's a lot of these older people that don't really care to have internet or computer or satellite or any of that, you know, my in-laws still have the phone at Walmart that you put minutes on, I mean, that's what they use, they only use it for emergencies and call when they need to call, and that's the kind of people we're going to have in here, so we need to just be prepared for that and understand that and be patient in that, because I don't blame them for their frustration, I, I feel sorry for them for that frustration. And that's what I'm.
As an aside, I don't practice social distancing, I could write a book on it, so if you need any tips on how to stay safe and away from public, just.
Don't touch your face.
I try not to.
That's impossible, you're on your face, that's, anyway, thank you, sir. Thank you.
In regard to one of the things Luke said, uh, and I made this point, I think, two maybe three weeks ago, uh, the more stringent the actions that government employs to prevent the spread of this, uh, quite honestly, the more, uh, they're really going to create the spread or at least increase the spread, and I'll give an example, I said this before, if, uh, if you're, if you needed to work every day and you needed that livelihood and for whatever reason, you just could not be quarantined for a number of days or weeks, you would suppress any indication of having an illness, so you would try to suppress that so that it wouldn't be recognizable. So you would try to suppress that so that it wouldn't be recognizable to your employer or other employees, and you would continue to try to work. And my example would be, you know, right now, we're talking a 14-day quarantine. But if you thought you were going to be quarantined for six months, as an example, you would surely try to avoid anybody putting that in place on you. So you would hide whatever problems you had. And so I said early on, I thought this, some of this quarantining of individuals was maybe too stringent inasmuch as it suppressed their ability or their willingness to come forward with the potential of having disease. So that's just my take on it.
Hi, Heath, 911 Center Director. How are you?
I'm good. How are you guys?
Doing good. We'll get the sound going here. We're okay. Heath, if you want to give us an update on dispatch, 911 Center, I guess.
Yeah, so Heath Brant, 911 Director. We're kind of in a different boat. We're not really a building that's open to the public per se. We have actually requirements by the FBI that kind of prevent that. We do have people in and out from time to time, but we've gotten some supplies from, through Stephanie. We tried to order some and the order got canceled just because nothing's available. We've had some donations of hand sanitizer from some different distilleries that were, we've passed out to the staff. You know, they've all been really good about, you know, keeping the center clean, disinfecting all the stations, because we do share workstations, which is kind of unique as well. But, you know, luckily, we've, we've had a couple of people that have been off on quarantine because of family members who were presumptive positive, but had a couple staff members tested and all come back negative. So right now, we're in a good position. Hopefully, we stay that way. But that's about what we have going on here.
Thank you, sir. You're doing a great job, by the way.
Thank you.
All right. I hear a lot of what's going on in the chat on the radio. You guys are handling it real well. Appreciate it.
Thank you. I got to go get that pizza, Dwayne.
Okay, Michael Dell, you want to give us an update at Animal Shelter?
By the way, we got some coffee back here if anybody likes to judge.
If you dare.
May I take my chances?
Thank you, Commissioners. I'm Michael Dell, Director of Animal Control.
Welcome.
Dr. Morgan, I'll be able to talk to you. Thank you. Nice to see you. Things going okay. Everything's, I think we're gearing up for opening. We've got some mitigation protocols in place. We're tweaking those as we're getting feedback from Sheena and Commissioners. I'd like to thank the public. I don't know if you're aware of this, but all the time we've been closed, we've had donations coming in almost every day. Help both the people bringing things to us and leaving them out front for us to bring them in, but also donations of monetary type coming in every day. So the public have been wonderful, just wonderful. I can't thank them enough for them being so patient. I had people showing up every day wanting to adopt. We've kind of put that on hold just for now, but we're ready to gear that back up. I'd like to thank my staff. We've gone several days, but we've got nearly zero animals in the shelter, or very few animals in the shelter. Staff is still working for those that work from home, getting animals out to rescues. We've had transports going out all the time. There was a moment where we had zero cats in the shelter, and that's kind of unheard of for an animal shelter. So I'm just, I can't thank my staff enough. One thing that is a concern is we're seeing that animals are testing positive. So we don't know if this is a true zoonotic, where they can get from people to animals and from animals to people, but still, we're not sure. Now, we haven't had anything like that in Indiana.
We're shaking, is it? No.
Oh, I don't know. I'm just thinking in my head, like, here's another wrinkle.
Well, there's just, if all tested positive, I think we're on for a life. Of course, there were. That's, that's a positive too. So there's still a lot of unknowns there. We're going to try to keep things as clean as possible. Thank you, Jason, for keeping us in the loop on the, on the plastic sneeze guards. Really appreciate that. We definitely need more hand wipes. I've got some suppliers that I've been able to get some things in through, but things like aerosol sprays and just like everybody else probably aerosol sprays and wipes like Sheena's got. In fact, I'll take those, Sheena.
You probably need to be talking to Stephanie. She should be able to get you some of those.
Yeah. It's just things like for us, our restrooms are both public and staff restrooms. So we've got that to kind of keep in mind as well.
Can you make one of those public and one of those?
We might be able to, male and female, so I.
Make the, one of those public and then close the other one and make it just.
Just for staff. I think we could probably do that.
For a temporary period of time.
Sure.
Just have to make sure it's, I assume that the women's restroom that you just, the men's, I guess, that'd be men's.
Men's, yeah. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we definitely can do that.
We can do, you know, it's nerves.
We've also got, I've been, I've got some suppliers I've been able to order sanitizers that also go into vehicles. My officers will be able to use those in their vehicles to sanitize their vehicles if it does kill the virus. So we've got some hand sanitizer dispenser, dispensers that we're putting above the walls now to avoid those. So I do have some suppliers I can get things through. It's just some of the things that I just mentioned that Stephanie can get to in greater bulk that I need. We try and just provide everyone some help. We've number, we're numbering the parking spots that are in the very front of the building, 1-3-6, so that way we can kind of facilitate people who are coming in and out, kind of keep track of who's coming in and out. We've got a sign going up front, a large sign that has our phone number. He gives a call, we'll come out and we'll, we'll direct you on how to come in, et cetera. For those who don't have cell phones, I think we're going to put something in the other size, it's flash your lights, and we'll come out and we're going to be there. Because we have dogs and cats, so we can kind of keep people separate who would want to look at cats, we can keep them separate and let groups in or group in for that. Dogs, separate, group in for that. And hopefully never the twins will meet. I don't know if that's the correct phrase.
Occasional goat and pig.
Yeah, goat, yeah. Those pigs are actually outside, so we're good there. We also have protocols in place for people who have missed or are missing animals that need to come in and check to see if they're there. We can take them in through the side, through our other kennels that aren't normally altered at home. We're going to do everything we can.
How many calls been in the last three weeks?
As far as.
Dogs and abuse.
About, about the same that we've always had.
It hasn't gone up.
No, no, I haven't seen that. I'm sure the sheriff has seen a lot of things going on.
Well, you know, the human side does.
On the human side, sure. Not so much on the animal side. We've been, we've responded to every call and we haven't had any credible animal abuse or guilty accusations or allegations since we've been out walking. We've had some horses running, cows running, things like that. I think that's pretty much part of the horse society. We're, we're doing our best.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I got asked an interesting question on the radio the other day. Certains think, no, I'm involved with the animal control and the first being a canine unit in the past and know about where we're going to have anxiety from these dogs and cats when people start going back to work.
Oh, yeah.
And that's an absolute, you're going to have. And, you know, they said, well, what would you do? I said, you just got to make sure, you see them before you leave, just like you do your family. Make sure you get hands on them, talk to them, whatever. And then make sure you see them when you come in the door, and then that'll start floating away and get back to normal. But they're going to have to do a little extra for a little while, because I've had a dog go through that anxiety. So it's tough.
I'm sure there'll be the opposite reaction where some animals will probably think, I wish you guys.
Thank goodness, yeah.
So we get back to do what we.
It's usually wives and husbands, though. It doesn't do that.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Elected officials, so let's, who do you want to start with? Who wants to start the elected officials in the building here? Wes Kenne. Prosecutor, you know, I'm not ignoring you, but I figure you're doing whatever the Supreme Court's telling you to do, so.
Yes, we're a little bit different. I agree.
How many have you come up then? And as soon as Michelle's, or you want to go?
Ladies first.
Ladies first.
Michelle Ann Graves, Johnson County Treasurer. Lots of good information here today. So the Treasurer's Office, this is our busy tax collection season. I would like to report that we have had phenomenal success with our online payments. And the numbers that we've seen are so impressive and very exciting. We have five methods to accept property tax payments, none of which involve a face-to-face meeting here in the building. However, we have been working with the sheriff and our maintenance director and the auditor's office on how we'll get people in the building. Our main focus will be social distancing. So be prepared if you feel that you need to come into the building to make a payment, it will not be timely efficient. It can be done, but it will not be timely. Looking forward to the sneeze guards and.
Never thought I'd hear that happen.
And we would welcome some face masks if they're available. I will not insist the staff wear them. I do know there are a few members, members of my staff who would wear one if it is provided. And that's their choice.
Jason has some, I know Stephanie's got some health department. I think, I think we've got masks that, that should be available for those who choose to do so.
Or stocked up on hand sanitizers and wipes and disinfectant. And I think those are just the two key words moving forward as a group is social distancing and disinfecting. And encouraging everyone who can make arrangements to do their county business without a visit to the building to please do so.
You know, really, and just thinking back through our, our winter months or fall through winter, it might not be a bad idea to just practice this continually and stay in Indiana during flu season. I mean, you know, our flus, how many different strains of flu do we have now? And goodness, I think sometimes this will teach us to do more preventative on our own, personally anyway. So this might be something that we have to look at. And once people get used to it, you know, and I think they'll accept it fine and, and knowing that we're trying to protect everybody, not just us, we're trying to protect them too. So I think we've got to look at this. I know I do the same thing every day, but I've always been a germaphobe. So to me, it's easy to do this, but for some people it's not, that don't have those type of hygiene issues like I do.
I would, I think I've said before, I think this virus, if nothing else, has exposed the inefficiencies all over the country, not just the county government. And it's just going to make us stronger on the other side as we all work together. Like you said, Johnson County has amazing people, and this group comes together. And I think we'll be stronger on the other side of this, more efficient. And I would like to thank the Commissioners for always being willing to listen and hear what we have to say and take that into consideration. Thank you.
I think, Michelle, your, your reference to the amount of tax collection that you're proceeding already via email or average, they're doing it, doing it online, just goes back to support what I said earlier, that intelligence of the general public are going to avail themselves the best and most expedient method available to them. I, I think that's, you know, I'm in a strong opponent of letting the private sector take control of this situation more so than the government side. So thank you.
My pleasure to serve.
I have a question for you. It scares you, doesn't it?
I know where you live.
I don't know if you're a Pimmelburg Johnson County Auditor. I know the numbers that Michelle's speaking of. And I have to say, I questioned her this morning because they are phenomenal numbers. And I know that they are projected and they are ballpark, but if you feel comfortable, I think it's worth sharing.
Sure. So we switched, the Treasurer's Office made a move to a different merchant to support online payments. And we're able to offer the taxpayers this year the opportunity to pay with electronic check, which you can do so at no additional cost to the taxpayer. And so we compared the numbers of what we had collected to date with credit card and debit payments from last year. Last year to date, we had collected $160,000 in property taxes using a credit or debit card. This year, our online payments today are 2.8 million. So it's incredible.
And you have to keep in mind that property tax is probably the most onerous tax that we're, that we have to pay. And really, most people have a problem with that, more so than income or sales. And that's, that's a big difference.
It's really exciting, so thank you.
Give it to the recorder auditor, whoever wants to come next. I'll leave that to you.
Joe.
Oh, Joe, I'm sorry. Prosecutor Joe. Sorry, Joe. I was, my head was in this building.
Joe, Bill, and we have a prosecutor's office. Just wanted to start by echoing some of the comments that our sheriffs said. I think one of the reasons we've had such success here in Johnson County with, you know, not letting the COVID hit the jail and some other places that can really do a lot of damage for us is a lot of collaboration between my office, the courts, the sheriff, probation, as well as all the other law enforcement agencies in the county. We've all been in constant communications with each other and working on how can we try and balance keeping the bad guys in jail and not allowing that microcosm of the COVID to hit us. So we've dodged the bullets so far. Been a lot of work for other people, not including me, so I wanted to thank them for their efforts. As far as what's going on in the prosecutor's office, we're kind of in a unique position where we're in our own, our own building, you know? Being the former police station, we have the glass that comes down to about two inches from the bottom of a little tray to slide there. So my people are pretty protected. The maintenance department has set us up with sanitizers and wipes. Susan comes in and does our offices twice a day and just does a great job. We do have some public restrooms in the foyer. Really, there's not many people use it. I think some of the police officers come in there. You may get some public in there. We do have some staff use those. I'll encourage them to just kind of limit that to the employee restroom we had inside our offices. As far as our staff goes, I think next to the sheriff's apartment, we probably have the largest group of people that's contained in one building. We've been on some split shifts for a while, morning and afternoon, to try and help with some of the social distancing. A lot of what we can do is available to be doing either at the office or remotely from home. As you guys might know, all of our filings with the court are electronic now. We're actually working on trying to do our discovery process to the defense attorneys more electronically than, than we did before. The only thing that is different from what we're doing and our part of where we are in the procedures from the courts is that for the time being with the building shut down, we've not been doing any kind of depositions or really only very crucial emergency CAC interviews. That's our Child Addicts Center for children who are victims of sexual abuse. We've been trying to push those things off because it is pretty hard to, to clean those rooms between, between viewings or interviews. Maintenance has done a great job helping do those. So if the decision today is to open back up, I think what we would probably do is start getting depositions, at least for the police officers to come in there, maybe hold off a couple more weeks for the civilians. The Supreme Court has talked about not even having any kind of jury trials. Don't even think about it until, till the June. Now, I think we're going to have a hard enough time getting people to feel comfortable coming in and sitting in a room as it stands. So the more we can kind of get done now on the front side, the less we're going to be backed up come, come summer. It's going to be atrocious. If all these people on jury trials have a feeling, our judge is going to be coming to the council asking for more money because we, we don't have that many here and things have gotten, getting backed up. So.
I'm just making faces.
Yeah. We'll, we'll, we'll do what we can, but we're, we're pretty lucky where we're at. We're kind of self-contained and, you know, unlike the lady in this office, we don't, we don't have as much public interaction.
Joe, can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
What's the blue ribbon of your.
Oh, this, this, Denim Day is actually a national thing supporting sexual assault victims. This stems from 2015, 2016 states out of Italy. twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen states out of Italy where the uh, perpetrator's conviction was overturned by their Italian Supreme Court because they found that the female victim wore tight blue jeans. And so, you know, she was uh, you know, asking for it, for lack of better terms. Uh, so they turned over his conviction and it's kind of a show of solidarity for, for sexual assault victims. Uh, it's, it's Denim Day. So, my office says uh, take some photos and we're pulling support of those things.
Good enough.
Thanks, guys.
Ever sees this so much, you know? You know, it, it goes back to the I thank God. There's some prayers I've had where I asked him for things and he didn't give those to me. And I put, apply that here. You know, that's a, that's a bunch of crap. Sorry about that. Sidebar, sidebar. You want to come on up, Mrs. Recorder? You're sitting outside. I'll bring you in.
Teresa Pietro, county recorder. Um, first of all, I'd like to say, I think that this whole thing has um, shown the public, county residents that we can still get a lot done even with this going on. Um, I think this whole building has continued to serve the public very well. The um, departments within this building, I know, work very well together, phone calls, emails. Um, making sure that everybody gets everything done because you know, the property tax thing is just amazing. That's, that's a really good thing. And people getting their um, property taxes, their recordings, their extensions, everything through this is going really, I've had a lot of comments. We've done a lot electronically. A lot of people like it, a lot don't understand that. Getting ready for the, um, you know, my parents are in that H group. My mom's worried about her twenty-eight dollars in property taxes. If it's ripe, then she needs to go into the Shelby County Reporter's Office. And I'm like, no, you need to go to the auditors, but we'll call them. But I understand that. And um, my staff and I know everybody's, we're, we never ever try to let anybody get off the phone upset. Sometimes it's been a little extra time. And we do that. And we don't really, we, we've kind of, the other three offices are a little bit busier right now. But we go in by our office, but um, we had intended on, and I'll talk to the health department. We intended on putting um, a table in front because we have a, a screen that people look at. They want to see you bring their property up or their deed up. And we um, crucifix stuff so they can see the same thing we're looking at. My staff doesn't, they're not crazy about the sneeze guards because, you know, if you go into Lowe's or Walgreens and they have those, a lot of times you can't hear and they're like this anyway. So, but, you know, we might look into that.
Where they got the credit card thing around behind the screen. You gotta reach
Yeah, yeah. But you know, CBS told me it was really the table in the group, the table is to keep them from touching, everybody touching the same surface that we touch. So, um, I think we're, we're blessed in this building. We have a lot of space for our employees. Our, our, our desks and stations are part of our, the girls are responsible for cleaning their own desk area every day. We don't have to share like some of the offices do. So, um, maintenance, they, I say, we need more sanitizer and wipes. They're there the next morning. A lot of cooperation and um, we're ready to go with whatever the county decides and help in any way that we can. So, and I appreciate all the work that you've all done very much.
Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate all your work too. Again, I, I go back to, it seems like we just come together as a county and everybody works well together when we get into situations like this. And always, but it seems like it really brings out the best in us. Ms. Auditor?
I'm Pimmelburg Johnson County Auditor. I do want to pass on a thank you to everyone for everything that they've done. Not a lot that I can add to what's gone before me. Nothing has been said in this room today that I don't believe we are currently practicing over in the auditor's office. Social distancing, sanitizing, uh, helping the taxpayers in every way that we can. Jason Miller mentioned yesterday something that struck home to me, said, you know, taxpayers own this building. They're going to expect to be back in here soon. And I do agree with that. Um, I, I, I believe this is a horrible thing and, and everyone in this building, and I can only speak for this building, has done everything within their power to assist in any way that we can. Probably ninety-nine percent of the services that we are offering now, uh, we can either do electronically or over the phone or any service that's provided at our counter now will be the same service that could be provided on December the thirty-first at four o'clock with the same effect. So, we are in the advantage there that anything we offer, I believe, there's a couple of things that we're going to have to see face-to-face, but for the most part, I, I think we're good to go. Um, I don't think we have any services that are going to require a mob at the door. Agreeing with everyone else, I think the people that are going to show up are going to be our most vulnerable people because that's what I've seen in the last thirty years. And we're just going to handle those individually as a one-on-one basis and do the best we can to, to take care of them. But I believe the auditor's office is set and ready to go at any point that uh, the commissioners see fit to help.
Thank you, ma'am. You know, there's quite a few.
David Hiddle, Johnson County Planning and Zoning. Uh, we're in our traditionally heavy period and our permit flow has been uh, pretty much the same as last year, a little bit behind. I think your typical homeowner might be delaying plans to, like, put on that addition or build that garage or what have you. But, but um, we're taking all of our permits and land use petitions online right now. And it's gone better than I never would have expected. I think Angela Coils, our office manager, is, has sort of found a new gear and made all that work, even though her right-hand person, Lindsay, is on FMLA right now. We need to take care of her kids. So, uh, big commendation to her. Um, Chris and his crew have been extremely helpful. We had our first Zoom plan commission here last week and, and it went a lot better than I never would have expected. I think there are some pretty complex components to it, but Chris really masterfully managed that for us. And so, um, like a lot of other folks have said, it's not, it's not hard to find cooperation in this building. And it's a great, a great attribute that the, of our department heads and the folks who are running our, our offices. We're, we're doing good. We really appreciate the fact that we have so much space down there. Um, our field crew is very much out in the field these days. So, those who are remaining back in the office that have plenty of elbow room, I think, you know, practice the social distancing and all that. We, we have found that most, everything we need to do can be done over the phone or online. So, we're not encouraging people to come back in the building when we do need to have um, physical interaction to give them a public notice sign or take a check. We've been able to do that just by meeting at the front door at a scheduled time. So, I think we're going to continue to encourage people not to come in unless they have to. To again, there's lots of phone calls, lots of emails, but I think we're getting them in and out of the door pretty quickly. At a four or four. I think that's all.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
I'm going to often add on the line. I was just saying, you know?
What's that?
I'm going to often add on my house right now, just so you know. And I really like that.
I don't think anybody else from the West End, if you want to talk to, um, I'm Sarah.
Hi, Sarah.
Hi. Sorry, the lighting's not too good in this room, but um, just wanted to, of course, start by thanking you guys for everything you've been doing in this uncertain time and fill you in a little bit about the Johnson County Purdue Extension Office. Um, we have been keeping the building closed to the public, just like you told us to do. We have signage on the front door. As far as I know, we do have enough supplies um, for things to be wiped down and cleaned. Potentially, as we open up to the public here in the future, we might want the maintenance staff to come in more frequently to clean our bathrooms, but I think otherwise we're doing good and employees are well. Um, we do allow people one at a time by appointment. So, um, right now is a time where 4-H families need to get tags for animal projects, and that's um, been done, like I said, by appointment. The county office staff are there and they're working in the office every day with the doors locked, answering phones and using machines. Um, the Purdue employees, like myself and a few others there, were told by Purdue HR to work remotely when possible. So, that's what we're doing. Occasionally, we do pop into the office to get various things done. But Purdue has banned all face-to-face events and educational programs. So, we are instead holding things virtually or we're postponing them. A few things have been canceled. And right now, that ban with Purdue face-to-face events goes through June thirtieth. As far as um, July events, we'll know more from Purdue on May fifteenth. Everybody keeps asking and wondering about the fair. Um, we just don't know yet. So, on May fifteenth, we'll hear more about things that can happen in July. And so, um, just moving forward with our building, we obviously want to practice social distancing. A lot of our clients and different volunteers that come into the office, um, we want to limit the number of them. Um, obviously, any guidance that you guys have for us to move forward as the reopen eventually happens, we'll um, follow those rules. But we're kind of thinking that maybe we could use our large education room in the building to set up a special area that allows for more distance between the assistants that work in the office and the people that come in. Since it's springtime, we're getting a few more visitors, asking farming questions and garden questions. But also right now, the main um, clients that are coming in are people with 4-H inquiries. And as I've been listening to you guys and all the other department heads, I thought I heard the May eighteenth date thrown around. Was that accurate for potentially reopening buildings?
No, that's actually a Supreme Court for the courts.
Okay.
At this point in time.
Okay, I just
For May fourth is
May fourth, okay. Either ways, great. I just, it caught my ear and I wasn't sure. There's so many dates swirling through my head as it is. I want to make sure I've got the right one. Thank you.
Keep listening, just in case it changes here today.
Yeah, things change minute by minute. So, please keep us up to date.
Right now, a shipment of sneeze guards is But anyway, uh, thank you for
I got one, I got a couple of questions for Sarah. Sarah, is it working with your building being closed now and setting up individual appointments? Or if the building is open, are you going to get a flood of people coming in with questions on the fair? I know a lot of them are youth. They're not going to really adhere to what everybody says they're supposed to do. They're going to come in anyway. I, I'm just asking for a little direction from you and what you've seen over the past month.
Sure. It's hard to say exactly what's going to happen. I think between now and May fifteenth, it won't be crazy. Depending on what happens with Purdue's decision, May fifteenth, things could be a little crazier. It has been working so far. Heather Doherty is our 4-H educator and she's scheduled um, appointments via Sign Up Genius. That's a great website um, for people to pick appointments and come in at a certain time slot. So, if we can continue with getting people appointments, I think it's okay. But you're right, if the doors are unlocked and people sort of coming in as they please, it might get to a point where we need to limit how many can be in the building. And definitely lots of signage to direct them where to go and maybe those Xs on the carpet for them to stand far apart as well.
Would it be better, I guess, from my logic on this, to maybe set you off till the fifteenth? So, Purdue might answer a lot of those questions with their decision on what's going forward from that point on.
It's a possibility. Um, I would say it's best if I can talk with Heather and the other staff, since they're much more involved with 4-H than I am, um, before we definitely put that in stone. But there, that's not a bad idea.
Just risk, worth, versus reward. You know, if they're in there trying to figure stuff out and the fair is canceled, it was all for naught anyway. So, any of the appointments that would be or the flood of people that would come into your building. Because I know there's a lot of people anxious with that through, you're dealing with hundreds if not thousands of people coming in. So, that's why I'm asking that question.
Yeah, between volunteers and the 4-Hers themselves and the parents, it is um, thousands of people. And we can urge them through our communication to call us or email us. But you're right, as far as, there's nothing necessarily stopping them from walking in the door if the door is unlocked.
Thank you, Sarah. Appreciate it.
Mm-hmm, thanks.
Hang on one second, sorry. Can you hear me?
You can.
Okay.
Can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Thanks. Good afternoon. Um, thank you for all you guys are doing um, and all the other departments and all the help they've provided us um, the last few weeks. And um, I sent you guys a lot of information on email. So, I guess, instead of repeating all of that, I don't know if you have specific questions for us. Um, we are kind of in a unique situation with all that we offer the public and how they use our grounds and facilities. So,
Are you seeing a lot of traffic out there as far as just people coming through?
Yes. Yes, quite a few people driving through, um, walking dogs, going on walks, using the trails, playing disc golf. But everybody seems to be following, you know, government regulations on social distancing and small groups and family groups. And it's really been a neat thing to see. People, you know, our, our usage increased during this time, during the nice weather, and being able to offer that to the community is great.
Yeah, I knew that. It was in the email, but there are people maybe listening that didn't get that email that that's kind of important information for, so they know that that's going on. Yeah, I, I know I drove through there. Uh, I don't know. Can't remember what day it was last week, but it was pretty busy that day and it wasn't that great or better that day. So,
Yeah.
I know there've been news, people wanting to get out. So, that's a good place for them to go get out and still be able to maintain the social distancing and do the things they're supposed to do. So,
Yes.
Appreciate that input from you and the email that we received. Any questions for? Thank you.
The horse shows, I guess, would start back up after all this lifted. Have you got any slated for now?
We have one left on the docket for May. I'm pretty sure that that's not going to happen. That one is May ninth and it's a small mounted shooter show. So, if restrictions are still in place where they cannot have a gathering of more than fifty people, then it won't be viable for them to have the show and they'll cancel. All of the other shows in May have canceled through the first week of June. And um, actually, the two United States Eventing Association and the other agencies have banned events through May thirty-first. So, um, that's pretty much in line with, with their restrictions. Um, we've been offering rescheduling dates. Some are not able to do that, some are. Um, but we're starting to reach out to events in June to just see what their thought process is and make sure we have dates that we can offer if possible for them to reschedule.
Thank you, Megan. You have a great day.
Right, thank you. You too.
Then the museum is David on, and I, I know David. I got his email, you know, to go on that and that.
We're trying to follow that order, but
I thought I did pretty good. Yeah, follow that. Is there anyone else that, that would like to?
Actually, David does have.
Well, Chris is doing that. I want to thank our IT department because they've been busy too. Got a lot going on right now.
He should be able to hear you.
Are you there, David?
Oh, he doesn't have a microphone.
Oh, he doesn't have a microphone.
Well, you can hear me there.
He can hear you, he can't talk, okay. So do you have any questions for him that he can answer via chat?
Uh, just the, the only thing that I noticed on there was the, I, I don't, and I don't think David in any way meant for large groups to be allowed into the museum, but I think we need to look very carefully at the number of people that are allowed in the museum at the time. I know it's a big area, but um, and David, if this is something you can think about, I was thinking, you know, we have three floors there, if we could do ten per floor, I think that building is big enough probably to handle that. Some guidance from the health department on that, but it is a big building and, and I think we just need to be careful how many people we let in there at the time for the first few weeks of this and, and while we're progressing. And that's the only thing I had to add to the email that, uh, that David sent. So, we, we'll kind of seek advice on that before we would get to that point from the health department, but uh, I'm pretty familiar with that building and it's a pretty good-sized building, so I don't think we'd be hurting it. Not from our.
I'm on the museum board, so I'll.
Yes, you are. Yeah, if you can, if you guys can work on that, it'd be great, but it's just, you know, from the email, I just want to put that out there. Because I know David would love to have big groups in there, I know he would, so, we gotta be careful.
Well, I'm, and I'm not sure that ten's a good number anymore. Uh, that's really not, not a feasible number to try to do any kind of business when you have a facility that has eight or nine employees. When you're saying ten people, what are you saying, just one person from the public? So I think that's, that's a number that, that could be exceeded again depending upon available spaces in your facility and how you can do social distancing and what, you know, but. I've got a meeting uh, here in a little bit, I have to go across the street to courthouse. And I just want to make a couple of points here real quick. When you only hear the benefits of an action, but never the cost, then you will easily agree to that action. And Dr. Walter Williams, he's the economics professor at George Mason University. I don't know how many of you are familiar with him, but a very, very wise man. He had a great analogy and his analogy was that forty thousand people each year die in automobile accidents. So he said, "We could save almost all of these lives by mandating a five mile an hour speed limit." Fortunately, we consider cost and rightfully conclude that saving those forty thousand lives aren't worth the cost and inconvenience of a five mile an hour mandate. And that just stuck home to me, so much made so much sense. And so I would give you a comparable example when we talk about, and you, and those of you who have been around a number of years have heard me say this multiple times, we can never be a hundred percent safe. I don't care what you do, you can never be a hundred percent safe. But using his, his somewhat example here on the benefits versus the cost, we talk about it, our employees. Well, what if we tried to mandate that all the employees that work here had to stay in this building for the next two months? Because we didn't want them out in the public, running the risk of, of getting this virus. Well, I think you guys wouldn't buy into that, I don't think we got an employee who would say, "I ain't doing that." And that's it, my point is just to show you that some of the things that, that we've incorporated, that we being government have been on the ridiculous and sublime spectrum. And quite honestly, I think that the private sector could have solved this issue much more quickly and quite honestly, they're in the public, public sector or the private sector, solving it now. They're the ones that's coming up with solutions and vaccines and verum, serums and all of this, coming up with the ways to do business and not uh, exacerbate the problem. When you look back at the last six weeks or two months, what has government created? Well, I can tell you what they've created, I've got it in the outline here. They've created havoc. Debt. Arbitrary and discriminatory decisions on, on letting businesses out of business and running lives in that fashion. They've created a, a real good job in fear in the, in the general public. They've created massive unemployment. And now we're bordering on civil unrest. I tell you today that, and I've been preaching this for a while, get government out of the way. Let the private sector take control of this, they'll solve it and they'll do it efficiently and they'll do it quickly. And that goes back to some of my earlier arguments, you gotta give the general public credit for their own intelligence. When we began as government to tell people how they should act, what they should do, that's contrary to the basic human rights. We need to get the hell out of the way. Now, I'm not suggesting that we just immediately go back to normal, that's not gonna happen, we know that. But I do suggest that the general public is wise enough to know how to go back to the normal lifestyle. And I say that, and I've said that before, let's get government out of the way as much as we possibly can. Monday, when I came down here, this is kind of an extreme example, but I'm gonna use it as I was trying to come into the building and Carla, down in the treasurer's office, she was coming up the ramp. There was an elderly gentleman with a mask on, crippled, he could hardly, when I got there, he was descending back down the stairs. He'd had worked his way up with a good deal of effort and now he's working his way down. He didn't realize the building was locked. And that's the kind of inconvenience that we're putting on the general public today. I know that's, that's a one in a million maybe kind of case, but it just kind of exemplifies some of the inconvenience that we've created for the general public. That's my dissertation, I'd be willing to debate that with anybody, I'd like to have that conversation later. I do say, and I've said before, that I think we're beginning to realize the benefits of this situation that we've incurred for the past, past few weeks and as much as we are getting more efficient in how we deal with the general public, uh, especially in light of them being able to access our services in a much, much easier fashion. Just want to get that off my chest before I have to go where the Judge Martin's toward.
Yes, sir. Do we have anything else we need to?
I think we just need to take this under advisement and ignore really some kind of direction on this. I don't think it needs to be decided right now.
Well, and I know, at this point, I don't know if we can, because.
I got my sneeze guards.
You know what I'm gonna say? I said, I promised him that.
I mean, I think by, I think by tomorrow afternoon, I think we need to release something, either we're gonna stay closed or we're gonna open, I don't think it needs to be down to a knee-jerk reaction at the last second. Everybody needs to be a little bit prepared for, I know they're preparing for it, but give me real direction.
And I think too, is, is, and, and department heads and elected officials, everybody that's gonna be involved in this, what we need to understand is, is what the public are, that what they're gonna need when they start coming into the building is instruction. Uh, and we've got to make sure that we are prepared for that instruction. Uh, and those three ways to do that are gonna be through signage, um, gonna be through the security officers' guidances that come into the building. That's gonna be a big, big deal uh, for them and we need to understand that. And from employee guidance, you know, we're gonna have to maybe go out of our way a little bit to make sure people understand what we're asking them to do. So, I just, I want us to think about that a little bit as we go into this process because they're gonna expect us to be able to tell them what we, we need them to do to help us help them. So, if we can just kind of keep that in mind and, and again, let's, let's not panic, let's just stay calm. Let's give them uh, a calmness from us that they can understand, so we can help them. Again, I think we're gonna be dealing with a lot of older people and we need to understand that and be cognizant of that as we go forward. And I also think we need to have some kind of public announcement to make sure people understand what we're doing and try to get it on as many places as we can, so. Just some closing thoughts there for everybody to think about, I think that's kind of where we're at. Um, you know, as I've said, day one, I just, I want everybody to stay calm, let's just, we'll get through this. It's gonna be okay on the other side of this. We didn't put ourselves here, but we're here, so we've got to deal with what we've got to deal with. And hopefully we can do that in a proper manner.
And one thing for sure, that's been demonstrated here today, is one size doesn't fit all. So you have some departments that are gonna have a need to have more, you know, probably uh, people, or more people into their facility to do business. You've got other departments, as Joe pointed out down there, it's got very minimal public contact maybe, so it's not a one-size-fits-all. I, I think it's up to the elected officials and department heads to kind of come up with some solutions for their various areas as to how they must, must meet the needs.
And I've said that, you know, our, our job as commissioners is to open and close the buildings. Once we open the buildings, then it really becomes the determination of elected officials uh, on how they want to operate their offices and that. But uh, bottom line is, is unfortunately, if we open the buildings, you have to prepare for us opening the buildings, so you've got to come up with something from there that works for you. And, and, and that's why we had this meeting and why we wanted this input. I think we're all thinking in the same fashion from what I'm hearing, so I think we're getting there. Um, and every individual, you know, like the highway is gonna be different and, and what is needed there publicly than here, the extension office, it's given, uh, promoted, is gonna be different than it is here. Animal shelter is gonna be different. Um, what we're really looking at right now is, is for the most of the public is the West Danx here, uh, since the courts are still closed, so. Let's just try to keep that in mind and, and again, let's use rational thinking and, and clear-headedness and just some common sense and let's get through this thing and make it work for everybody where we come out on the other end where we're not the enemy, but we're the friends. We'll go from there, because that's what we get paid to. Anyway, I need a motion for adjournment.
Good for adjournment, sir.
A motion to second, we're adjourned, thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.